Call to order the work session, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I have Wayne Gresh with Corolla Engineers here with me. We want to go through our findings of a preliminary investigation to a river intake site. I want to give you a, basically, the goal for this is to give you enough information to where you feel comfortable moving forward so that we can begin the next steps. That's really what the takeaway from this is, to ask questions. Feel free to interrupt us at any time. The meat of the work session is going to be pretty much engineering-based, and we'll kind of give you some pros and cons of, you know, why, you're not going to get a lot of detail on why we're not going to the canal versus the river, but I think, for the most part, we've looked at those, and I think really what it boils down to is cost. So, background, just to give you a little bit more background. We entered into a contract with Corolla Engineering last...
About a year?
It's been, been close to a year ago to design our water treatment plant. I think this July, it became pretty evident to staff and also everybody here on council that we were struggling to get an intake off of the canal with the City of Albany. Coming to an agreement on past capital, moving forward, we haven't even started the process of moving forward yet. It's all been based on past capital at this point. And to date, we still haven't come to an agreement. They want a lot of money from us. There's a lot of physical stipulations, such as them owning the structure, which is good and bad. They're tied very heavily with FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The regulations, we would be basically subjecting ourselves to those same regulations. Not that there's not regulations out on the river.
Are we not now?
We are not now. I mean, we are, in a sense, because we pay an operation and maintenance fee, but I only see that getting higher and higher and higher as the regulations get stricter and stricter. You're also talking about a, over a hundred-year canal, a hundred-year-old canal that obviously needs maintenance. Does it need the amount of dollar maintenance that Albany's requesting from us? In our opinion, no, it doesn't. Not for our use. For theirs, yes. So, that's where the rub is, and that's why we're having such a hard time coming to an agreement, and Gary can attest to that. We've been back and forth, and, you know, to this point, we just haven't come up with anything. So, we entered into another small contract with Corolla Engineers, and we looked at multiple sites on the river. We studied a couple of them in-depth, and when I say "in-depth," I mean briefly, shallow. We haven't got into the meat of it yet, but we've looked at a couple of things like, can it support an intake structure? Is there a lot of environmental issues associated with the site? How would we get the raw water back to our proposed treatment plant location? So, those are the things that we've looked at to this point. We studied two of those, like I said. We found one, which is, happens to be on River Road, and I don't have the address in front of me, but we have actually taken and put money down for the property. We have put $2,500 down. We have 180 days to close on the property, should we not close. I believe, Trey, we've got another 180 days and another $2,500. So, we've, in essence, basically have an option to buy that property, which happens to be in what I guess we would consider the best location of, out of all the ones that we looked at for a river intake. And I'm going to let Wayne get into the, to the, to the big stuff, you know, why we're going to do that, and basically tell you about the engineering study, what we came up with, and kind of moving forward, and then I'll close it from there and kind of give you a little more information as to where we're headed in the future. And we are not, I guess I should state, we're not looking for a decision here. We just want to basically give you the information. I think there is an agenda item later on in the council meeting, national council meeting, where we will be requesting approval one way or the other. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne, and we'll go from there.
Okay. I would echo what Ron said. What we really want to do is answer your questions. And so, we put together a team of highly qualified individuals in geomorphic conditions on riverways, environmental permitting specialists for this type of intake, and then our own firm and another firm that does a lot of water intakes as far as feasibility. We did stay at a feasibility level on the study, but what we were looking for was the fatal flaws, and then make sure that if a decision was made to move to a new intake location, that there was a location that would work for you. So, I apologize, because this is going to be behind you, but the presentation we have is, Ron has printed out for you, so you have a handout, and we'll follow through that. In essence, there was five issues that were assessed. Early on, we looked at overall costs in a workshop with Ron and several of the staff. You've heard on the water rights issues, and tonight, I'm going to focus on the geomorphic assessment that we've done, their environmental permitting review, and then facility concepts. So, originally, we looked at the past studies that had been performed, and then we conducted a tour of the riverway in and through Lebanon, up on the far right-hand side as your existing intake location, and we actually looked at that, whether we could take water off that same point. We looked upstream of your wastewater plant, which is another probable site that's easily accessible. We looked at reaches that were in the warehouse area, and then we looked at what we call Site Two, which is in the, near the new development. I believe that's Riverview School area and the development that's in there. And then we looked at an area along the river that already has riprap and revetment on it, and where the stream channels is against the bank on the side that we really need it to be, and that is referred to as Site One as we go forward. We looked at how we would get that to the new water treatment plant site, or how we would re-site the water treatment plant to a location that would be close to the intake. We came up with the Site One and Site Two as the best locations for various reasons, and we focused our feasibility study on those two sites. And you can see how they, where they are in relationship to the new water treatment plant property. At Site One, this is a picture looking upstream. It's, that bank has been armored with riprap. That was done several years ago. At Site Two, the armoring has stopped just upstream, and that's in a area of the river that meanders back and forth. From a, the geomorphic assessment was conducted by West Consultants. They're out of Salem. And what we were really looking for was the stability of the channel and its migration from side to side, and we're looking for riverbed stability for water depth. And then they assessed also the river flow conditions, so for the high-flow conditions, so that we know what we're looking at during the flooding stages, and the lowest-flow conditions, the intake has to be able to operate under the low-flow drought conditions, and so that you're not at risk in losing that supply. They took the historic channel migration of the river from back in the 1930s to the current, to 2012. What they do is they plot them on a map, and this is an overlay of all those channels. And the, with this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the farthest the channel has come over towards Lebanon is this line right here, and there's a reason for that. That's where that armoring occurs. And then that's, it's migrated here, but in just a few years, it's migrated back and forth in this zone where Site Two is quite a distance. So, the river channel at Site Two is not very stable. At Site One, the river channel is pretty stable, and that's because it's been armored up in that area. That armoring was done years ago, likely to protect the roadway, and it's still in place, and it's actually in good shape. And it extends, the upstream side starts here, and it extends all the way down, and you can actually see it down in this area. It's off the river channel quite a ways now, but is visible. The conclusion to that study were that Site Two is not a very acceptable site. It's not very stable. It would be, if we sighted an intake there, it would, it's likely that we would be, we would have to affect the river quite a bit to get a stable bank area.
Excuse me?
And the water depth could be something like 12 inches there. Yes?
Can you, can you back up? Who maintains the armoring?
The armoring right now is in, so that, there's a district that it was done for, and that district holds the rights to the maintenance of that armoring. And so, in the permitting process, we would, you would have to go back to them and discuss with them whether, you know, you could alter that. But in essence, the Corps of Engineers is going to be the agency that takes care of that.
Okay.
And the intake would not affect that armoring.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was the Corps or some other...
Yeah. Site One, the channel itself is stable. The designed water depth's going to be in the area three to five feet. We did our feasibility study at three feet of water depth. The one concern that you would have about Site One is that in a major flooding event, the downstream channel could widen, could deepen, could change, and we know that it does, that could affect the water depth at Site One. And that would, that is one of the next steps, and if we move forward, is to do some modeling work to make sure that we've got a good handle on that. Is there, are there any questions about the river itself and the characteristics? Okay. So, the next piece that we worked on was environmental permitting. And we know that there's threatened endangered species in this reach of the river. There, we, ESA, Vihila Grimace, conducted this work for us. Again, they're a pretty premier firm in the state of Oregon. The permitting agencies that we need to work with, Department of State Lands and Fish and Wildlife at the state level, the Corps of Engineers, and they will involve NOAA Fisheries, they may involve U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. There's a joint Section 404 permit that needs to be completed, and while it's one, one application, it's two different permitting reviews. The state review and the federal review are separate. We had ESA make an initial assessment of wetlands and the habitat at the two sites. And Site One, there are no wetlands. They took care of that during the riprap. But it does have tree canopy, and shading of riverways and river channels now is a very important issue with regard to the temperature in the rivers. Site Two has wetlands along the bank and in the stormwater drainage area. Just from environmental permitting, there are no state-listed species that we would need to deal with, but there are federal threatened species, listed species, which is Chinook salmon and steelhead. And then you have to look at what conditions in the river, those, for the timeframes and whether it's rearing, spawning, or migration, and that sets up the federal intake standards. They've got fish screen standards for those. And so, we use those standards for the sizing of the intake. The state is an individual. It'll require an individual application, and likely, you're going to be required to mitigate damages to the river, mostly for the shading, so we may have to go along adjacent reaches of the river and add some shading, or use a banking for that. On the federal side, there is a nationwide permit that is suitable for this intake, and we will ask that it be permitted under the nationwide utility crossings. If they won't go on a nationwide status, then it's an individual permit. It's actually the same application, but it opens you up to an individual review and consultation requirement with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and that can add nine months to a year to the permitting process. We're going to, you're going to need a full biological assessment for either permit. Maybe I should back up. Are there any questions about the permitting criteria requirements? So, the facility requirements themselves, for the intake that, that we believe is feasible is the Site One, and it's not very easy to see on this slide, but the intake would be right along the river, and we would propose putting a raw water pump station on, in the property opposite that, with a pipeline that would connect the intake and the pump station. The raw water pump station then would be connected, would parallel the roadway and connect to the water treatment plant. At the water treatment plant, we will need to put an equalization tank or something like that in front of the membranes, just so that we can take care of the, balancing the flows through the plant. But we would have the raw water pumps at this location, we now have them located in the water treatment plant because of the relative distance to the intake. The type of intakes that are normally used in, for this size of flow, would be, one is called a T-screen, and a T-screen is simply a circular wedge wire screen that's connected in through a pipe, and then there's a, and so this, these are the screens, connected with pipes and a header. You combine the header and take it into the pump station. It's a very common type of screen for water treatment plants. The other type is an inclined screen. An inclined screen is along the riverbank. This happens to be the inclined screen for Salem that I was part of in the design process. This is another inclined screen, a little more inclined to it. This one does not have the trash rack in front of it, which we would put a trash rack in front of your screen. The pump station itself would be a pretty simple and straightforward facility. We would have a number of pumps in there. I should back up. That intake would be sized for your full water rights of 37 CFS, and that's what we looked at, with taking the full water rights. Depending on how your guidance was on your water rights, would be how many pumps we put in here and the ability for those to convey those full water rights to the plant. It would be pretty simple. There'd be pumps and piping in one area with walled-off area to separate your electrical controls. You would end up with a new, another standby generator for, so that we'd have reliable power at this facility, and we have a standby generator at the water treatment plant as The next steps in, in this work would, I should back up and say that we're pretty confident that Site One is a suitable site for an intake. What we need to be able to do is provide some confidence in the water depth. And then the next step is to actually get into the permitting piece so that we know what the federal regulations requirements are going to be. But on the, on the geomorphic analysis, we really need to do a bathymetric survey of the river, to be able to put that into a computer model, and that survey would be both upstream and downstream of the intake location. We would put that in a model, and they would model that, the transport and the channel characteristics over time. That would give us the ability to know what the low water depth is going to be and the stream bed itself. On the permitting side, we really need to get in and talk to the permitting agencies. We did this work without communicating with them. We were given some assistance so we know some of the permits that already exist in the area on the river and the work that was done. Individual meetings with the permitting agencies will allow us to understand what their concerns are for the physical facilities, and what they're going to need, what we're going to need to show them to permit the intake on that reach. We know that the biological assessment's going to be required, and that would take, that takes about nine months to complete. That would be used by the agencies in their biological opinion. And to start into the permitting process, we need to go into a more conceptual, conceptual design on the intake itself, so that we have what's needed for the biological assessment in how much cut and fill's going to be required, what the physical facility characteristic's going to be like, and what the construction requirements were going to be, which all have an effect on the time that's required and how much we're going to need to restore along the river. When you're given the permit, you'll be given what they call a take, and that take will give you the right during the construction period to permit, and if you, if you have a fish kill, you will be permitted for that. And it's very important that the construction conditions that we put in that permit follow how we intend to construct it. With that, I, answer any questions that you have? Yes?
As a part of your work, did you develop a critical path, Gantt chart, timeline?
We didn't develop it for this piece. The key to that is knowing whether it's a nationwide permit on the federal side or an individual. The permitting piece is the critical path, and that will take about a year to complete, maybe 18 months. And part of that is because we need to do the biological assessment and make sure that everything in that assessment lines up with how we want the project constructed. If we can use the nationwide permit, we simply stay within the parameters of the nationwide permit on cuts, fills, and the work in the river, and we are confident we can meet those conditions. But it is really the Corps of Engineers that makes the judgment on whether they can, you can use the nationwide permit. That would set the timeline, and the federal permit, if it's an individual application, will set the timeline on the permits. And it is because they have to have comments back from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we have to have an individual consultation with them to just get the biological assessment opinion prepared, and they're not very timely on those, and we've seen them take up to a year.
So, we would potentially enter the process, and then it would be some time before we would really have the Gantt chart available so we could see the critical path?
Yeah. What we would recommend is that you, if you continue forward, our next step is to convene these meetings with the regulatory agencies, and we recommend that you do that individually to start with. Invite them here, invite them to the site, tell them about the project, listen to their concerns individually, and then we can meet corporately with them and talk about the permitting criteria. At that point in time, once we know how they're going to accept the permits on the federal side, the Corps of Engineers, we can develop a Gantt chart, a timeline.
Okay.
And it'll be a lot shorter with the nationwide permit.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me close then with what we're, where we're at, and just kind of give you a little bit of a synopsis. Wayne, that was, that was good. I think that defined where we're headed. You can see, we've still got a lot of work to do. I wish I could tell you it was going to be easy. I see a lot of hurdles to jump, but we don't see anything showstopping at this point. And this is a fluid situation, kind of, no pun intended, but, but it is very fluid. It could change tomorrow. I mean, we could, something could come up, and it could change tomorrow. We're going by the best information that we have in front of us. Right now, it looks like it's a viable site out there to go do our own river intake. You know? In terms of cost, what's this going to cost the city? You know, when we did our, we did a rough whiteboard 50-year present worth analysis up in Portland with Wayne and his, his team, and we came up with somewhere around half, maybe less than half, over the life of the plant, if we were to stay on the canal versus going to the river. And that is less than, you know, if we went to the river, it's going to be less than half. And that's, that's what drove the decision to continue on this path. I think that, that's the driving factor of the whole thing, not to mention the regulations and, and not being able to come up with, with an agreement at this point. So, it is doable. It's expensive. What's it going to cost? I wish I could give you a ballpark. It's going to be quite a bit more than what we initially planned for the project. It's going to be in the neighborhood of eight to 12 million. I mean, that's, that's just what it's going to be. By the time you, you go through and you do the construction, you move your water rights, you go through the permitting process, and we do all this, and we buy the property, that, that's going to be the cost of it. I wish there was a way around that, but we won't know an actual until we kind of get down there, and, you know, we'll do things to keep costs low. So, the other thing that I guess really to leave you with is, this process could be three to five years. We don't know. We don't know until we get into it.
On the cost, when you're talking about that kind of money, you're talking about it spread over the period of the four or five years to get that process done?
Yeah, potentially, yeah. So, so, right now, you know, the rate structure's in place to finance a good portion of our water treatment plant as we were moving forward. So, that money that was generated from rates is cumulatively, cumulatively collecting year over year, so that cash will be used above and beyond to help this. What that final tally is, we won't know until we have an actual, until we've got some good design to look at and, and we know what the regulators are going to require.
And are we in a position where we can go step by step through this process, and then when we hit the roadblock, we can say, oh, boy, this is something we want to not continue with?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have to be. I mean, there's, there's really, there's two options here to get a, you know, I suppose there's three. We could dig around for wells some more, and we've done that a lot and been pretty unsuccessful. We either come to some kind of an agreement that everybody can live with and it's equitable and financially feasible for Lebanon with Albany, or we go out and we do a river intake. And the river intake, like I said, is going to be more upfront, but when you start factoring in, you know, life cycle of the plant, it's not more, based on what we have with Albany right now. So, that, that's kind of where we're at. Is there any other questions with that?
I might point out on the permit, on the intake that you need from the canal, that requires a FERC piece to it. It may not be very significant, but they have different resiliency standards. The intake on the river will not require that. You will not ever, you'll not be under the FERC regulations, and you'll be able to submit the permits as the applicant and owner. You cannot do that for the intake on the Albany Canal. You can do all the work, but you can't make the permit application.
Why, why is Albany under that? Is that because of the...
Because they're under a project.
The power, yeah, okay.
It's the power canal piece of it. And you do need the Division of State Lands because you still have a wetland area to deal with right on the edge of the canal, so you still have the biological assessment. It's a smaller area perhaps. You have the, some work restrictions are lifted because you already have the fish stream being done at the river, but it does require, still requires a state permit, a 404 permit, and it would likely require the same shading, the same mitigation work that is going to be required on the riverway. It's really the federal 404 action that is different.
So, members of the council, at this point, what staff would like to, to know from you are your thoughts, your, your individual, individually, what you think our direction ought to be. We need to know going forward how you'd like us to proceed. We need to know going forward how you'd like us to proceed. So with all the facts that have been presented, and of course, if you have other questions, let's ask those, but we would like to hear what your thoughts are about this process going forward.
Yeah. I think that the work that's been done is appropriate and is moving us to the decision points that we need. And what I would like to see from staff and from the consultant team would be to develop those critical paths as soon as possible, and to follow up on the point that you made, Mayor. We need to know when we're at a go-no-go decision point. At what point in time do we either obligate ourselves or are we -- I didn't take a fluids class and didn't get a grade, so at what point are we in deep water and we have to start swimming or we got to get back on the shore? And I would -- I think the council, you know, with staff and the consultant team could put that together for us. So well ahead of those decision milestones, we have time to evaluate that, look at legally, time and finance, and what other parameters we may want to consider.
I think it's a good path, the right path to go down, what you're exploring right now, because, you know, you think about council 20 years from now as we think about council 20 years ago and what they could have done to prevent us from being where we're at. You think council 20 years from now, that, you know, we took control of basically our own water position. Right now, we're at the mercy of Albany, and we're suffering for that, right? We're -- any solution that includes Albany, not that we may not have to swallow that pill eventually, but any solution that includes Albany leaves us with still relatively little control and no ownership 20 years from now.
Agreed.
So in that perspective, long-term, it'll save money. I think it's the right path to pursue.
And we will bring this back to you in agenda tonight as an agenda item.
I'm not at all comfortable with the situation we're in with City of Albany. They just keep throwing more bills at us to pay, and it doesn't seem like there's any end to it. I know we've got a lot of money that's going to go into this if we make it go, but I think also, like Rebecca said, look ahead 20 to 50 years. I think it's the way to go.
I agree. I think a lot of the -- what we've seen are some decisions that have been made as to our obligation that seem to be untimely, whimsical. I would like to put the city back in control and predictable, even initially at a greater cost, but it's definable. It's known cost, not whimsical cost, and I don't see that we would have an alternative.
And I'm actually going to be alive 20 years from now.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I just wanted to point that out.
I -- and I'll concur, and just on what everybody else said, I think that it's something that we have to look down the road. It's something that we -- that could have been done years ago, that we could have been in a better position where we're not in this position, and we could just be building our plant right now. There is a big expense to this, but I think the expense is worth it, and I think that we should continue on the same path, the dual path that we're doing. And if we just can't reach a good conclusion with Albany, then we have this to fall back on, and I think we should just continue. And I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. Thank you.
I appreciate that. There, as a consultant, if all things were equal, you know, when we do water treatment, we look for the highest quality water to start with, and that would move you to the river. There's only going to be more development on the canal, and those individual homes that are along there, you cannot control what they discharge. And you can better control that through the watershed council on the river. So that would be one point from a long-term standpoint. The other is that I work a lot with resiliency planning, and the organ is -- there's a statue in front of Oregon that will be going through in the next few years that's going to require water utilities and wastewater utilities, so it would require you as a city to look at resiliency plans for your water system. And those resiliency plans, what it means for you is that you need to look at the maximum seismic earthquake event and how that's going to affect your water supply system. And Albany's going to be under the same case, and if that canal is your sole source of water and those banks don't hold up, then you're going to be on record with a resiliency plan of knowing that. And likely, it's not law now, but likely if you look down the road 50 years from now, you could be required to have facilities robust enough to take care of those events. And water is critical in a post-disaster situation. So I would just say that if I was looking down the road a long ways and everything was equal, the river intake is probably a good option.
Just one final point. We would benefit from you working openly, as you have done, and frankly with the staff, so that we, as a council, can take advantage of the best options.
Absolutely.
And like that recommendation, and if there are things that -- some actions that, if the city were to take, would potentially reduce the cost or increase the quality, we'd like and benefit from that kind of relationship with you as a consultant.
Yeah, and that is our relationship. I mean, we want to be open, but we want to give you the best information that we can. It really is our goal.
You know? That's it? Did you enjoy Gary?
I think that's what we were after, Ron. Is there anything else?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that pretty much sums it up. I mean, there's probably more questions than answers at this point, but we'll continue on down that path, and we have -- we will have the option to pull out of this, you know, at some point if you see something that's showstopping or -- but everything that we're looking at, and we've looked at it, and we look at it on a daily basis a We're not -- we see hurdles, but we don't see any walls. So we'll have to climb those hurdles and, you know, hope that nothing comes up, so.
Great. All the work. Yeah, very good. Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, and we'll reconvene at 6:00.